All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting. We are coming out of the Thanksgiving season. There are a lot of educators that have gone back to school this morning after a week break, and I know they were thankful for the break. And can have three more weeks, and then we'll get a Christmas break. And so thankful this morning for all that they do for us. And so would you join me before we begin our meeting in a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. We don't have any recognitions this morning, but we do have a change to the agenda board that we will ask you to make. We have an appeal over classifying the Marvel District in need of Level 5 intensive support. And so we would need to have a motion this morning to add that appeal to our agenda. So would anyone like to make that motion?
I would make a motion, Ms. Newton. This is Cat McFetrich.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. McFetrich. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. So we'll go ahead and do that agenda item first, the appeal to about classifying the Marvel District in Level 5 intensive support. And so Ms. Freeno, would you give us the procedure for that, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Lori Freeno, Department of Education. All persons wishing to testify before the State Board shall first be placed under oath by the Chair of the Board. The Division shall have up to 20 minutes to present its case to the Board, including rebuttal. The Chair of the Board may allow additional time if she deems it necessary. The appealing public school district shall have up to 20 minutes to present its case to the State Board as to why the school district should not be classified as in need of Level 5 intensive support. The Chair, again, may grant more time if she feels it is necessary. The State Board may pose questions to anyone at any time during the hearing. The State Board shall then discuss, deliberate, and vote upon the matter. And after the appeal, if the appeal is denied, then we would move forward with the next agenda item, which would be determination of the classification of the school district in Level 5.
Okay. So when we go through this, then at the end of listening to the appeal, our motion would be to either grant the appeal or deny the appeal?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. All right. So would anyone that is planning on speaking in this manner, please stand and raise your Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. All right. For the Division, Ms. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner, and welcome community, Marvel Elaine. Seen them here before. Welcome them here this morning. Dan, are you loading my presentation, sir? Thank you. All right. So today I'm here to basically for the Department to recommend classifying Marvel Elaine School District Level 5. I want to state that this is not a state authority. We're not trying to assume state authority over Marvel Elaine School District. We are not recommending for the Superintendent to re-removed, and we're not recommending for the School Board to be removed, but for them to be classified in need of Level 5 support. And so some of the things I'm going to lay out for you today are just some of the academic facts, financial facts of where we are today, and what has raised this level of concern, and why we feel like the intensive need is there. So Marvel Elaine School District has two schools, PK 6 with the elementary has 179 students, the high school has 127 students. For a total enrollment as of today, 306 students. So the enrollment trend for Marvel Elaine continues to be a concern for them. In 1819, they were at 367 students, and you can see that they have had a steady decline of student population. This year, they kind of leveled off with where they were last year. Last year, they actually dipped below 300. This year, though, they're sitting right at 306. But the enrollment for Marvel Elaine School District still continues to be a concern. Just kind of a general classic timeline for where they've been the last couple of years. In 1819, they were actually classified under fiscal distress. That was Superintendent Collins at the time. That was in the spring. In 1920, they continued to be under fiscal distress, and our Office of Finance assisted them in great detail. That was when Cindy Smith was here. She worked with Superintendent Anderson very closely. In 2021, going into 2021, Superintendent Anderson actually reached out and requested more additional support for academics. At that time, we started sending in more literacy support, more boots on the ground onsite with principal support, direct support for Mr. Anderson, Jennifer Barbary. My Assistant State Superintendent was the one directly working with him. They had made progress in their finances, and we actually came before this Board and requested that the district be removed from fiscal distress during 2021. That was during COVID. Not shortly after that, they did lose their Superintendent. And so this is a district that has gone through a lot of grief. It's a small, tight-knit community, and so that was really a painful thing for them. And today, even being here and having these conversations, it's still very personal. OCSS continues to support for the 2021 school year. Interim Superintendent Denetra Williams took the lead on that. We continued to support her during that time. 2223 school year, they have a new Superintendent, Dr. Katina Ray, and she is here today. And I do think she is a superstar. You're going to hear from her a little bit later, and you'll see that she is a superstar. At the beginning of the school year, she did ask the Department to pull back on support. She needed to establish her leadership and the authority in the district. And when all of my folks were there, it's many boots on the ground, many people giving directions. And so at that time, we did pull back. So the academics for 2122 school year, and this is really why I'm here today asking for a deeper analysis and a classification. Marvel Elaine Elementary School Total Index Score is 48.06. It is the lowest SS School Index Score for an elementary school in the state. They have the lowest weighted achievement score for an elementary school in the state. Their scores continue to decline even after the initial year of COVID-19. When I'm showing you this chart, they are the black dot. So they are the lowest school on that achievement and growth quartile on that side there. So that is for their elementary school. On this right here, this shows you actually how many students scored. So this would have been for 3rd through 5th grade. And when you look at ELA Students column, you'll see 50 students. So 50 students in 3rd through 5th grade who took the assessment scored in need of support. Seven in the elementary school scored close, two scored ready, and one scored exceeds. So only three of the students of Marvel Elaine Elementary School scored at the ready or above level in ELA. For math, you see 36 in needs of support, 21 at close, and only two students scored ready or exceed. So scored ready. Again, here's where you can see trend over time with subgroups, and most subgroup scores continue to decline even after COVID. 2019 would have been pre-COVID. And then 2021. And then 2022 is where you saw most districts start to rebound in areas, and they have continued to decline. Moving to the high school, they have done some reconfiguration of their grades. So their high school currently is 6th through 12th. Is that correct? Seven through 12th. They've reconfigured. The high school data I'm giving you was last year's when they were 6th through 12th grade. Okay, they have reconfigured. So Marvel Elaine High School, their total SS Index Score was a 46.4. It is also the lowest SS School Index Score for what I would call a traditional high school in the state. And I'll explain that about traditional in just a second. They're also the lowest weighted achievement score. So when you look at this graph again, and Dan, can I get you to move those pictures? Thank you. So on this one, the black dot again is the high school. All the other dots are all the other high schools in the state. The other dots that are around them in that area are ALAs or the Alexander Youth Facility Prison. And so the group that they're with are the ALAs. They're not with the traditional, even the lower performing schools up in the 20, would be some of our other schools that are in state authority. They are much lower than that. When you're looking at their number of students, so in need of support, 88 students scored in need of support, the lowest quartile. And when we think about students scoring in need of support, when they're graduating or taking the ACT, what you're seeing those scores come out to on the ACT is like a 14 or 15. Getting into college for just entrance is like a 19. 10 kids scored close. Only three students from 6th grade through 12th grade scored ready or exceeds. In math, see similar numbers, 87 and 11, and then only four students there. Again, the same thing, similar here. You see scores continue to decline across subgroups. Dan, I'm going to have to ask you to move the picture again. This is moving over to their finance. Now Marvel Elaine was a district that was in fiscal distress. Okay? So they had a declining balance of like a million point three back in 1819 when they were first classified. So we began working on them. When you look at this sheet here, if you start at the very bottom, okay, that would have been the beginning year of fiscal year '20, so your 1920 school year, you can see they had an ending balance of 251,000. All right? So previously, they had a declining balance of over a million dollars. So that would have been the difference there. When you go up to fiscal year '21, again, this is us working with them, they ended the school year with 695,000. So their balance became better. That we then released them. Going into the next year, we released them from fiscal distress. You can see their ending balance there was 943,000. So now that takes us up to, you see FY '23 budget, and you see over the side, we have the 907,000. So this is their budget. Right now, what they currently have budgeted have them in almost a million dollar decline. So we have a lot of questions about that. We think that there's just some budget work that needs to be done, okay? When asking some clarifying questions around that, we know that there's just a lot more questions that we have and some work to be done. If they were to stay to that budget, they most definitely would be on the way back to fiscal distress. And so the top is where they're currently at. Human capital. So this is where we really feel like we need to do a much deeper dive and an analysis. Right now, they have a lot of 1240 waivers for teacher licensure. We have concerns about the number of certified teachers that are actually teaching in person on campus. We have concerns that there could possibly only be two in the elementary school that are actually certified, but I'm not 100% sure about that, so I don't want to state that as fact today, but we do have concerns. Concerns about the number of contract or virtual teachers providing services. We feel like we do need a deeper onsite analysis of this. Again, the district is meeting their obligations. They're trying to put teachers in classrooms. They are trying to recruit. I don't want to undermine any of the efforts that they're doing, okay? They have found unique ways of using virtual teachers and contract teachers to meet the needs and the standards, which are all good things. Our concern, though, is the level of achievement and outcomes we have for students and where we are. So we feel like as the Department, we really need to get in there and make sure we have a thorough understanding of exactly what's happening and be able to provide the support and coordination needed. So again, the recommendation today is for a classification of a district in need of support and to direct the Department to go in and do an in-depth analysis, especially around human capital, so that we can make sure that we have a full understanding of what needs to happen as we move forward. And again, not asking for the Board to re-remove, not asking for Superintendent removal today, just a classification.
Just one thing I need to correct. Was it Jay Collins? Jay Cottums? Joyce Cottums?
Okay, yes. Yes, Joyce. Yes, sir.
Do any Board members have questions for Ms. Smith? Dr. Hill? Dr. Moore?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wood? Okay, let me check online. Ms. McFetrich?
I'm wondering what kind of family and community engagement they may have. Can you talk to that about them?
I don't personally know of the engagement activities. I do know that you have several here in the audience today. I do know if you follow them online, they're frequently showing events and things from the school district. I'm sure Dr. Ray can address that question more specifically.
Okay. Thank you. We'll hear from the district in just a minute. So we'll save that one for her when she comes forward. Mr. Henderson?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Woods?
None for me either, thank you.
Ms. Hunter?
No questions from me.
Ms. Saum? Okay. Dr. Moore?
When we're looking at your recommendation for Level 5, does that include fiscal or is that academics?
It would be all six systems. It doesn't cover fiscal distress, so we are not labeling them in fiscal distress at this moment. But we would go in and start creating an entire system of support for them in Level 5.
What are the six systems?
So you have your academic, human capital, fiscal. You're going to have to help me. It's off my head. Family, community engagement.
Facilities.
Facilities.
I mean, was that?
We hit them all.
So an analysis would encompass all of those things, including teacher capacity?
Yeah, similar to what we did with Helena, West Helena. So once we classified them, my team went in, and then I came back to you guys with a deeper dive. This is what we found out about transportation. This is what we found out about facilities. And then some things for Helena, West Helena, they're fine, and we're not, they're moving along, and the other things, we've gone in and provided much more intensive direct support. So that would be the same thing here.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more questions, then we'll move on to the district appeal. Ms. Freeno?
Thank you, Ms. Newton. I am going to hand out a copy of the appeal that we just received. Also, it has been emailed to the Board members that are not here today but that are attending by Zoom.
Okay. All right. And so we hear from the district at this point? Is that correct? Okay.
Student supports was the sixth one that... Yeah, student support.
Morning, Dr. Ray.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Let's see. Okay. So my name is Dr. Katina Ray, and I am the proud Principal of the Marvel Elaine School District. And again, thank you for having me here today as I talk to you about a diamond in the rough, the Marvel Elaine School District. So I began this journey on July 1st, as you all are aware, that we've gone through some different leaderships in our district. But my start time began, again, began July 1st. If I can get this... Trying to get my PowerPoint to... Dan, can you? He always comes to our rescue. We appreciate that.
Okay, there is. Thank you.
Oh, the worn-out one. Okay. So before I get started with our presentation, I would like to introduce a couple of our stakeholders that are with us today. We have our Board members. We have our President, Mr. Plaid Williams, if you would please stand or raise your hand. That's fine. Ms. Alicia Monique is here. And we have our Vice President, Mr. Mark English. Thank you for being here and supporting us today. We also have some district supporters, some people that came to support Marvel Elaine. They know the work that we're doing there. And we'd like to recognize Dr. Bluck, who's here, Dr. Dawson, Dr. Charity Smith. Thank you all for being here today to support us. We also have a couple of district employees. We have our Business Operations Manager, Vicky King, who's here. Former interim Superintendent, Denetra Williams is also here today. And I would like to say a special thank you to my supporters that are here today. I have my mentor superintendent, Richard Adwell, from the West Memphis School District. He's here. Thank you for being here, Richard. And also my friend and Superintendent, Michael Stone, from the Lee County School District. He's here. Thank you for being here. We would also like to say thank you because we have been, we've been receiving a lot of support this year, and we want to say thank you to our OCSS support. Stacy Smith, thank you for taking my calls at 6:45 in the morning and on the weekends. I appreciate you so much. Mr. John Hoy, Jennifer Barbary, also Dr. Eric Saunders, who we work with very closely in the Marvel Elaine School District, and his team, Jamie, Karen, and Saleah. Thank you all for your support as you continue to work with us. So I came today not as per se a representative of the adults. I came today as a representative of the students because my student story is more than what you see on paper. It's more than just test scores. It's more than just numbers. All of those items that were shared, they're absolutely the truth. Some of those things we've shared with the Department because we've looked out to seek support for our district. So today, I stand before you as the representative of the students, and there are some things that they want you all to know about their district. So the Marvel Elaine School District, their mission statement, and it is supported by the district, myself as the new superintendent, community stakeholders, who are all committed to this vision, one being to provide an equitable education for all students. We want to inspire students to believe that learning is a lifelong process, and we want to foster good citizenship and good behavior. That's so very important in order for instruction and for learning to take place. And so we will also be looking at obtaining and utilizing information and developing them to do this and coping with the dynamics of society, thinking, reasoning, and problem-solving, developing creativity and human relationships within an environment that's conducive to learning. And a clear expectation has been shared with our community as we have reported out in our annual reports to the public on October 4th in Elaine and October 6th in Marvel. The Marvel Elaine Board believes that a strong, effective system of public education is essential for the continuation of our democratic form of government for the good of the citizens. So we are very pleased to hear that the state is not recommending dismantling the Board. So what else, Dr. Ray? What else would you like to share? And what else would the students want you to hear? Well, we, our students, we have 25 students in pre-K and P3 and P4. As stated earlier, we have 306 students in kindergarten through 12th grade. Marvel Elaine School District is made up of Marvel and Elaine. So these two communities were consolidated back in 2006. So they've already gone through the consolidation phase. In Marvel, we have about 73% of our students are from Marvel and 77 and 23% from Elaine. So again, both of these communities making up the Marvel Elaine School District. One thing that I'd like for you to know is that our students from the Elaine community, they have to travel at least an hour every morning and back to get to and from school every single day. So that has been something that really wears on, think about a student having to be on the bus for that long and then having to come in to give their best in a school. That is very, something that is a challenge. Our demographics, 90% African-American, 7% white, 3% Hispanic, and other. We have 97% of our students are low income, about 10% special education. As we continue to share about human capital, we currently have 62 employees. 45% of those certified employees are on waivers or ALPs. Again, we're practicing transparency here. That is our story. If you think about where Marvel is located, we don't have a lot of industry. We don't have a lot of, we don't have a restaurant. We eat at the local gas station for our lunch there. And so there's not a lot of housing. That's just the community in which our school district is placed. So currently, we have openings for instructional facilitators. And I say this out loud, just in case there's someone that's watching and they would love to come and work in our district, we'd love to have you. We are needing instructional facilitators for math and literacy, teachers for science and math, ELA. We need a maintenance supervisors. There's someone out there that would love to come and work in our community. We'd love to have you again. Security guard, paraprofessional substitutes, and high school principal. So we again acknowledge the fact that we need the support for human capital. We know that. Again, if we could make the housing be there and we could bring people in, we would absolutely love to do that. But as stated earlier, we're making it work. We're doing everything that we can in an effort to make sure that we're meeting all of the standards in an effort to provide our students with a quality education. So when I first came in as the Superintendent of the Marvel Elaine School District, there were some realities. I had to take stock of some things that were actually taking place in the district. I was friends with the former Superintendent, Dr. Anderson, as many of you in this room were. And it was a big hit, a big loss, and our community is still grieving. Do you know that it has not been a year since his passing? So we're still going through that. Our students are asking us, are you coming back? I went on to a trip just the other week, and when I came back, the student said, we thought you left us. These are the type of experiences that we are seeing in the Marvel Elaine School District. Our students, they are traumatized by a lot of the people that have left and not of their own. Sometimes they left, like I said, due to a death. So having to really acknowledge that, acknowledging that we had an interim district leadership and supports were being provided by OCSS. We do thank Mr. Denetra Williams, who's here today, for stepping up in a position that she didn't desire to be the Superintendent, but she stepped up for her love for the Marvel Elaine School District. We also identified the need to hire a business manager, bookkeeper, looking at meeting a strategic plan, identifying, making sure that we had all of our standards for accreditation were met, looking to hire highly qualified licensed and culturally competent staff because that's very important, working in a district like the Marvel Elaine School District. Identified the need to build instructional capacity, conducted, I conducted an initial fiscal review, including previous school audits, current enrollment budgets, all of that. Conducted initial facilities review, analyzed achievement and school performance data, prepared community engagement process, identified the need to update and revise curriculum, and focused on the need for teacher training and mentor. With having 45% of your certified staff that are on a waiver or an ALP, they're going to need some additional supports. So when we have people coming into our district and they share with us that the rigor is not there, we understand that because we're working with them. We're mentoring our new teachers. So during our initial accreditation visit that took place in October, there were a couple of items that were, that we needed to address. couple of items that were, that we needed to address. Standard 1A SMART Core written curriculum, special education services, dyslexia screening, dyslexia reporting, and principal job code. So to this date, we've hired a consultant to provide training and support to our new counselor and new registrar, because those staff members were new to us this year, to make corrections to the try and SMART Core report, so that is updated. The curriculum maps are posted to the MESD website, and we have newly created curriculum maps as outlined, and we appreciate the work of Dr. Renee Dawson with that work. We're closely working with our special education supervisor to ensure that the required special education services are being implemented and recorded in e-school. We had something in there that talked about our gifted and talented, and we do have a gifted and talented teacher that's working in our district. And then we're continuing to recruit and interview for a high school principal. So plans for continuous improvement, because we understand that this is definitely, it's not a race. We're going to have to take our time to ensure that we're putting forth everything that we need to ensure success for our students and also for our staff. So the plans that we are putting in place, school improvement plans for both campuses, those are in place and those are being implemented. We work closely with 1082 literacy plans for both campuses. We have 1003 professional development opportunities on the elementary level. We also have recruitment and retention plans where we're looking to seek out highly qualified individuals to come and work in our district. So why are we appealing? You say, well, Dr. Ray, you have all of that going on. We do. We have this, our district, we have a lot of challenges. But here are the reasons why we are appealing. Because the Marvel Elaine School District has a new transformational leadership team and a new results superintendent. And I don't say that lightly. I have, I'm from the Delta. I actually went through the Marion School District, and I know what can happen in the Delta, and so I want that for our students. And I also was trained administratively in the Little Rock School District. And if you pull my record, there's never been a school under my leadership that did not grow or move. So I know that we can do this. Reason two, the Marvel Elaine School District already is partnering with state leaders to build local capacity and a coherent plan for a district school turnaround. So we work very closely, once or twice a week, either Dr. Saunders' team, one of his team members, Jamie particularly, is either in our district or we're sending our business manager to Little Rock once or twice a week. So we understand the importance of working closely with the department to ensure that we are fiscally sound, and so we will continue to do that. Reason three, the Marvel Elaine School District administration needs the opportunity and the time to succeed with building accountable fiscal and academic structures. And so we're saying this because it hasn't been a year. Our district just lost a superintendent. It's 11 months. I've been in this role for five months. And I'm going to say that we welcome the supports of the department, but we're already reaching out. They're already supporting us at Level 4. And so we're asking to remain in Level 4 as we continue this work. If we have to come back next year, then okay. But right now, again, it has not been a year. And I've been there five months, and I'm still trying to find where things are located. Give us a little bit more time and an effort to prove that we can provide an adequate and equitable education for our students. So also within this Marvel Elaine School District's theory of action, so we're going to provide supports to students and staff to help uncover the needs of underperforming students and to build staff capacity by implementing evidence-based actions to address student needs. To continually, continuously inform the community about school quality and the prerequisites for school success, and to identify students and staff, students and staff in greatest need and provide sustained support. So again, I say that this is one of our most challenging assignments, but we feel like we can put all of the pieces together in an effort to really be able to turn this district around, because that's what we all want. That's why we're all here. We're not saying that we don't need the support. We need more support. But again, we feel like we're getting a lot of that support in Level 4, and so we're asking to, again, remain in Level 4. One of the members asked about parental support. Our parental support is increasing, as you all are aware. When COVID came in, no one could come in. You know, parents can come into schools and they weren't able to support as they would have liked to due to COVID. In our district, we're still wearing masks. We're still enforcing those items in an effort to decrease COVID and the flu. So we're still not up to 100% with our participation, but it's coming back slowly, as Stacy Smith announced on our social media pages. We're putting it out there that the Marvel Elaine School District is alive and we're on the comeback. And again, we ask that you give us that opportunity to prove that we can do this. So at this time, I do have Mr. Brad Beavers, who is our attorney, who I'd ask that he come up and say a few words.
Okay. Mr. Beavers.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Secretary. I think that over the years, a few of you may be new enough to the board that I haven't been here, but over the years, most of you, Ms. Newton, I know, Dr. Hill, I've been here. Typically, when I come representing a district, I have a whole big argument about why something shouldn't happen or something like that. Today, I come kind of in a different perspective, and that is to tell you from my microcosm of how I look at the district, that as I work with them, how that has been. And I have, as Secretary knows, I have represented many, many school districts over the past 40 years, and about five or six on a real regular basis. So I have, I think, a good perspective on when a district is in trouble, and I'm not afraid to say that on occasion. I'm not afraid to come up here and tell you that. This district, from my perspective though, and I have represented them going all the way back to Mr. Ulysses Reed, if you remember how many years ago that was, with just one little gap in there, but every other superintendent I have had the pleasure of working with and their board, to some extent or the other, whether it's even if it's just a suspension, I mean, I'm sorry, an expulsion hearing or a teacher discipline hearing. But in this case, when Mr. Anderson came, some of you may recall, there were some major financial difficulties in that district. We worked our way through those. He worked very hard. He was looking at things that I have never had to deal with for districts like a teacherage. Now, I'm not even old enough to remember when there were teacherages on campus, but apparently down at Elaine, they still had a house leftover that was a teacherage that somebody had been living there and not paying the rent. So as a school lawyer, I was working to evict or get someone to pay their rent. I have never done that as a school lawyer, and I will tell you, I do not do it as a private lawyer anymore, ever. No evictions. But we were doing those kinds of things. Mr. Anderson was, I mean, he was a go-getter. And then, right in the middle of several of my projects, he disappeared. I mean, I couldn't get him to answer. I called and they said, he's out sick. When will he be back? We don't know. And that went on for months. This was not a quick, bless his heart, it was not a quick and easy process for him. And then the board president called me one day, and his question was not, how do we fire Mr. Anderson? It was, what can we do? He has been out for this long period of time. Can we do something to move forward, to put some leadership in to fill the void in the meantime? Before we could get to that, we read an obituary. So that tells you how that, the board liked what he was doing. They could see the progress, and you can see from the numbers you've been shown today, the progress that district was making. And in my working with them as their lawyer on personnel matters and student discipline matters, occasionally on an eviction, he was so gung ho and enthusiastic and would occasionally just show up in my office, because I was on the way to Little Rock or wherever it was if he expected it. So that's what kind of engagement that that community had, that he had, it was going along. And then bless her heart, Ms. Williams filled in his interim.
Go ahead.
This is like the Supreme Court. I just ran out of time. Can I have just a moment?
You go right ahead. Go ahead.
Ms. Williams came in, and bless her heart, there's a lady who did not want to be the superintendent, but who loved that district, and she stepped up and she did everything she could, and she and I became really close friends. And we worked hard, but it is very difficult when you, first of all, there's been no leadership for four or five months while Henry was sick and we didn't know what to do. And then, so you're already in the hole and trying to dig out, and it's not, wasn't her, wasn't her wheelhouse. But she was stepping up doing it, because that's how this community, in my experience, and I've lived in eastern Arkansas all my life, just up the road from Marvel and Forest City. That's how those people on that board have been since the first time I walked in and visited with them, probably 25 years ago. They have been involved. And then when Dr. Ray came, I met her before July 1st at a workshop where she was coming and was learning, and she buttonholed me. I was there for a presentation. Secretary was there for a presentation, and then I was there for an afternoon with Dr. Ray. I didn't sign up for that part. Didn't expect it. But that's how gung ho she went into this, and she has been this way this whole year, working hard to do it. And so when this happened, the one thing that we would, that I would reiterate that she said is that this district welcomes the support. We understand though, that when you go to a Level 5, there's a connotation that goes with that. There is a reputational issue that goes with it, all of those things. And what we think is a more engaged Level 4 would be where we are certainly willing to collaborate in any way. We're going to do it whether, no matter what you do, they're going to collaborate with you and work to get this district going again. But we think that would be very helpful to give us that, and she said, give us a year. I can tell you, the board is engaged. I have been to boards, and Secretary and I laughed about this right before the meeting. I have been to boards that were so contentious that I can no longer deal with. This board, I have never walked in, and that is not to say that they agreed with everything. They have not over the years. There has been disagreement, but they are civil and they are most concerned about the kids and the school, as good as any board I've worked within 40 years of doing school law. That's my spiel. It wasn't the best closing argument probably that I have ever made, but I'm a little bit, in this case, it's hard to just say, these are such good people, have been for me, and have listened to every bit of advice I've ever given them, and they're prepared to do that with your folks as well. And we thank you for that time.
You're very welcome. We will see if any board members have questions. Ms. McFedders, did you get your question answered?
I believe I did. But I do have a question.
All right.
Do you want me to ask it now?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Ray, you talked about having student support services. Can you be a little bit more specific on what kind of support you're giving your students right now?
Sure. Are you talking about in the wheel of six? Is that, I guess, I guess that's what you're referencing in terms of the support services?
Yes.
Right now, how we are supporting our students is by bringing in mentors for our teachers. We feel like the best way to support the students is by making sure that the teachers are feeling comfortable and that they are engaged in with the learning process. But we've also reached out to some local agencies that, they said that it's been a while since they've worked with the Marvel Elaine School District, as we looked at how we can provide supports for students finding jobs, because a lot of our high school students, they're saying, you know, we want a job. We want to be able to work. And the services that we've reached out to that are now working with us, they said it's been several years since they've had, been able to come and work in our district. So we've done that. We've worked with, supporting even with the Arkansas King Commission, they've come out and done some creative things with our students and brought in supports to work with our students. And so we feel like that's just a start. We know that there's more that to be, that we will have to put in place, but again, those are just starts in an effort to support our students.
Okay. Do you have a student counselor on staff? Do you have a counselor on staff?
Yes. Yes. Yes, we have a counselor on staff.
Secretary Key has really encouraging districts to work with the professional learning communities. Have you been able to work with your staff and really take advantage of some of those professional development trainings?
Yes. So previously, the Marvel Elaine School District worked with Solutions Street as they developed with the PLC process. Currently, we're working with NIET. That's another program that looks to look at ways to find positive ways of mentoring and supporting students, and they also support us in terms of working with PLCs that are teacher-led. Again, we don't have, at this time, facilitators that would normally lead that process, and so those processes are led by our teacher leaders. So we do have those pieces in place.
All right. Thank you. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Henderson?
Dr. Ray, thank you for your comments today. Do you have any, I guess, I know there are limited businesses in that area. Are there any businesses representatives here today that we have for Marvel School?
No, we do not have any businesses that are here represented today. We do have letters of support. We've received the support from both mayors, from the Elaine community as well as the Marvel community. Both mayors are in support of our, of our district remaining, again, in Level 4 and also remaining open.
Are either of the mayors present today?
No, they're not present. They're unable to attend today.
Ms. Woods?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Hunter?
So just one quick question, and I should know the answer, but how long has Marvel Elaine been in Level 4 support? Now, that's a great question.
Ms. Smith is going to try to come answer that question.
So when the legislation, I believe it was in 2019, passed that classified districts in need of Level 4 support based on their literacy scores, that's when they would have been classified as Level 4.
So previously, were they under academic distress?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Smith? Can you help me with, what is the difference then between a Level 4 and a Level 5?
The intensity of support. At a Level 5, I assign a full team to them. They'll have an assistant state superintendent aside to them that will meet with the superintendent weekly, be on site multiple times a week. We'll have principal leadership coaches that go in and work with the principals. After we do our analysis, we determine what other additional support we need to provide. So whether that's literacy, ESL, I mean, we try to prescribe based on what their needs are. So Level 4 is more Zoom meetings, phone calls, helping organize some support. The Office of Coordinated State Support, it's really about coordinating the different areas of support, whether that's an outside contractor versus an inside DESI person. So it's really a lot of coordinating as well.
Thank you. All right. Let's see if we have questions here. Mr. Wood?
And I'm not sure who's best to answer this, but what has been the trajectory of the ESSO scores and the achievement scores over the last three or four assessments?
Since 2019, the scores have continued to decline. I can go and pull up scores before 2019 if you want, but they have gone down every year. Would you like me to look up at 17, 18?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. Ms. Saum?
So I know we said from Level 4 to Level 5 is more in-person support. One thing that was said was that it's reputational. Is that your biggest concern with going into level five, is that it, the reputation and the effect on teachers and the community, or what is, I guess, what is the resistance from four to five? If you could answer that.
I, I would say, not, not so much, because our students, they deserve a great quality education. So, it's not necessarily about reputation as much as we are currently receiving those supports. We're asking for it now. And so, the only difference with moving us into level five, we wouldn't qualify for, you know, the under 350 waiver, you know, so there's some other impacts that come with moving into level five. Again, we welcome, I think initially when Stacy was talking earlier about, I did ask them to back off just some, to give me an opportunity to develop my leadership in that district. Access called back and said, "Hey, come on back, we'd love to have you," because there are some things that they knew about the district that I didn't know, because they had been going in and working with our district. So, it's not that, again, it's not about reputation as much as it is, is that we welcome it anyway. So, leaving us in level four, we will continue to accept those supports, you know, from DESI and OCSS.
Do you think that you would benefit from more in-person supports in your building to be principals for you or for your educators? Do you think that more support not through Zooms or virtually, but actually people coming into the building to help? Or are you still, I understand asking to back off, because you do need to establish that, I completely understand. But as an educator, the professional development, the training that I get in person, the support I get in person can never be replaced online. So, that, I mean, that's kind of where I'm thinking.
And let me just say that we welcome in-person, boots-on-the-ground support from DESI, we welcome that. But again, we would like to remain in level, level four, but we, we welcome all of those suggestions. Again, we work very closely with DESI as it stands now, so, so we, we would love to have them come in to help us. But we, again, we would love to stay in level four for at least another year.
Secretary Key?
So, I just want to clarify the question about the difference between level four and level five. Level five actually gives this board more power and influence and authority and responsibility, and, and that's why we're asking for that with the, with the direction, to me, that the division performs a system analysis to bring that back to y'all. Level four does not have that, that's not part of what level four entails. Level four does provide considerable support, but the, the level five does have that element of more formalized planning that gets reported back to this board, and the, the element of that within this board can determine, are you satisfied with progress, are you dissatisfied with progress, and then the other options. I mean, we, we have been providing support to, to this district prior to Dr. Ray, prior to, you know, back when Dr. Cottums was there. This, this agency, the division has provided a lot of support through the years. So, but as the question was, has the district ever been in academic distress? The answer was no, because prior to 2017, that had a totally different trigger. Now, with the multiple systems component of, of the levels of support, that's, you know, we, we feel like we, you know, taking that next step is, so we could do that deeper dive and make the analyses that need to be made, is why we're bringing this recommendation.
All right. Dr. Hill, you have a, a question?
Not really a question, I just wanted to ask, how have you been able to perceive community issues that impact learning opportunity, for us? A lot of things in the community, from being a single parent and all the things that are, that I have witnessed on hand in the Delta where you are. And because it's one thing to, to increase instruction guidelines, but then when our children go home and don't have that support because of, of the lack of parental support, oftentimes that you saw here in urban communities which are so similar in rural communities. How have you seen that to be a challenge, to look at how it impacted scores and, and that, to be so low?
All right, thank you for that question. So, the community does have a great impact on, I would say, the, the lack of success because of some of those, a lot of those. It's a little different once you get in a rural community. Again, I grew up in a rural community and then moved to Little Rock. So, was a culture change for me, to some degree. A lot of the same issues, but in rural community, it's, it's different because we do have, again, for some of our community members, that's all that they know, that rural areas, it's all that they know, and, and that's, that's their experience. And so, having to come in to show them there is a different way, I've experienced it because I've had the opportunity to work in school districts across the state and that we can do this, but it does make it very challenging, again, with a high number of homeless students, a high number of single-family students, and, and then also the lack of industry, the lack of opportunities to, you know, work and, and make a better life for themselves. A lot of what's in the Marvel Elaine District is farmland, which is, there's nothing wrong with that. But we have to have opportunities for those students to learn and thrive if that's what they want to do. But then we have some students who that don't. But we, we have to give them opportunities, again, that's why we have to bring people in in an effort to expose them to, to things outside of what they would just experience in a rural community.
And I guess then that would be, I know, in trying to look at the supporting factors to support those efforts. Do you get support from local churches?
Yes.
From communities?
Yes.
To, to, to help with, with many of the social choices, issues that often lead to the academic decline of our students?
Yes, we, we actually, we've had opportunities for pastors to come in, to walk the buildings, to have conversations with myself. Our board members are very active on Sundays as they go to their prospective churches and they talk about the district and the fact that we do need their support. We understand that COVID came in and that shut our doors. I mean, for, for several, a couple of years, they were unable to come in, but we're welcoming them back into our school communities. So, we need them and they are now starting to understand that we are in a state of emergency. And that's what I've shared with our communities, that we're in a state of emergency and we need every stakeholder, every community member to come in to support us. If that's churches, sororities, paternities, other organizations that are available in the area, we need them to come to assist us as we work with our students.
Dr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, I know, there's just so many challenges. I, I just wrote down some questions earlier and just to help to get a better understanding of, of your students and the opportunities they have. Right now, talking high school, do y'all offer a virtual option or are all students in person? And being in your school, how many courses are you having to offer virtually?
Okay. So, we are in person, but due to being, not being able to find the human capital, some of the teachers, so we are using virtual options for certain courses. So, we have, I would say, trying to see how many courses, but we say that's virtual.
Is primarily like through Virtual Arkansas or other providers?
Yes, Virtual Arkansas, and then we, we've also worked with teachers and other, and primarily from Central Arkansas that have been zooming in to our classes. Because the, the thing it is, is that our students, they want an in-person teacher, you know. The emails that I receive from my students, especially on a high school level, is, "Dr. Ray, can you please find us a teacher?" And so, in an effort of, you know, because I can't find the people to be in person, then we have people that, that's live, that can have communications and that, that can talk to our students, and so they don't feel like it's a recording and that they're, they don't feel like they're getting all that they need or they desire to have from, from that particular avenue. So, but we do have several, I would say at least five or six that we are having virtually. And that includes Virtual Arkansas as well as having teachers to zoom in to actually teach courses that way.
Are y'all partnered with a local secondary career center? Would y'all have a secondary career center? Are there many career technical courses offered for students?
Yes, so we do partner with Phillips County Community College, and so, yes, so we do have a partnership there where we're offering like RISE and those areas in an effort to become a teacher, so we do partner with them, yes.
Okay. What about, thinking about elementary, as far as reading supports? I know it sounds like you have a, a number of non-traditional teachers at that level. Are y'all able to provide them, y'all work with a co-op to provide them with support on teaching reading?
Yes, so we, we work closely with the co-op as well as we bring in vendors that are working across the state with literacy that actually provide training for the, for the entire state. They're coming into our district to support us, and so, so yes, we are able to put those things in place. Again, we've tried to work with vendors that are, that are culturally sensitive to our area, because people can come in with biases if they've never lived in a particular area, and so how to work with the teachers. I want to say this, that our teachers want you to know that they work extremely hard every single day. Sometimes they don't always feel valued or appreciated, but I just want to go on record by saying that they do work extremely hard. Sometimes they just feel like people come in and they don't really value the work that they're putting in. And you have to also remember, with such a high number of teachers that are on waivers, they're learning how to be a teacher, they're learning the disposition of being a teacher. So, we brought in mentors, retired teachers, we've had a couple of retired teacher events to come in to say, "Hey, we need you." And so, we've been able to hire on some retired teachers to come in to work with our teachers that are on 1240 waivers.
That's good, it's certainly very challenging.
Yes.
Thinking about your students, we can't solve these problems from, you know, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Are there after-school supports, are there summer supports? What calendar do you all use in the district?
Yes, so we have a traditional calendar. So, we, again, we have the summer support, so we have summer school, where we work with learning laws in an effort to help catch our students up that are, you know, that have fallen behind during the school year or whatever. So, we also, we will be starting an after-school program. I just didn't want to start all of that. I wanted to evaluate, where are we before we just start putting the, the things that we've done in the past? And so, but we are, but I'm looking at doing something a little bit different instead of just a regular, I'd like to see something with the arts.
Absolutely.
Our kids are so creative and so smart and, and so there are other ways of engaging them in the learning process besides just the regular. So, those are things, I'm talking to people now about coming in and working with our students so that we can perform and learn at the same time, so those things are coming.
That's great, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions, that's all I have right now.
Mr. Wood?
So, most of the conversation's been academics as it, as it should be, but there was a little bit of the presentation tentative of financial situation as well. Can you briefly explain the nearly $1 million in expenditures or the revenues projected for this year?
Sure. So, we are definitely aware of where we are financially. We work very closely again with Dr. Saunders and his team, and so, a lot of times, we share with him. We did have a situation where we had to hire, we, we had had to hire a brand-new operations manager, and so, that person, again, she's here today, but she's working extremely hard to learn her job and to learn those things that she should be doing as an operations manager or business manager. And so, we've been closely doing that. With that particular budget, we know that it's there because we haven't transferred. Traditionally, our district, we make transfers, those items that we can use, using federal funds, we do that. We just haven't had an opportunity to do that. Again, when you have 50% of your central office staff that's new, it's a learning curve. And so, we know that we're going to make those changes, it's going to happen. We don't feel like the purple sheets that you see, they're not updated, but that's okay. But we know that there's work that we still have to do. We've worked the entire Thanksgiving break in an effort to putting things in because we know we have to do it, but again, we've had so mu, so many other things on our plate that we've had to try to clean up from previous years. So, again, if you remember last school year, when Mr. Anderson went out sick, there were some things that they weren't able to get to. And so, now we're having to try to play catch-up. We're having to go back in and clean some things up from years prior in an effort to ensure that we're on the right road and the right trajectory as we continue to work closely with the state.
I apologize, but I don't think I've heard a very specific answer to that. We're talking almost a million dollars difference between expenses and revenue, and it's almost your entire bank account difference. And so, I just, are there some big-ticket items that have been identified? Is there, is there a transfer from one account?
It will be, all of those things, yes. We know that we, we have to do that. Mostly it's with salaries, that we've been taking it out of regular operating, but some of those items qualify for federal funds. And so, that transfer, from what I'm told, usually happens toward mid-year. We just haven't gotten there yet, but that will definitely change. Again, we are fully aware of that and we just have to make the changes. It's, it's called journal entries. So, we have to make the journal entries and we know that we have to do that, it's just that part has not been done as up-to-date, but we are fully aware of that and we will be making those changes in an effort. So, that's not going to look the same probably. If we pull the, the purple sheets, they won't look the same today, because we've already started doing that. But again, we've been working on the financial end with providing training and some other items that we've been working with the state on to get some things cleaned up from previous years. So, we know that budgets, they're on, they're moving and they're, they don't always stay the same, so we figured we had a little bit of time before we had to do that, but we're, it's definitely, we're definitely going to do that.
So, I'm sorry, this is Lisa, I just need to follow up on that question just a bit, and I think this might be more of a question for Ms. Smith. So, that, that slide that showed that deficit spending of almost a million dollars, was that just a single fund then?
So, so that was pulled on November 21st and that's pulled directly, that's their budget, that's what they have budgeted to spend.
Okay. All right, so it's not actual?
Right, that's what they have put in their budget. So, you can see some large items like $200,000, $300,000, or like facilities was one of them and some of those things. So, we had lots of questions around that that needed some cleaning up.
So, a budget would include both local funds and federal funds, is that correct?
This, Erica, will you?
No, okay.
This is their state funds for this page.
Their state funds, okay, all right.
So, it is not all encompassing of, of all their funds that are available?
No, these are their state funds. This is what's budgeted for their state funds.
Can you retroactive salary like that, okay?
The, the purple pages are a, just a point in time, at, at any point during the, the school year, fiscal year, and so not to get too deep into fiscal because that's not, you know, what we're presenting today. It was, it was just to show the snapshot of, here's the projection, and, and obviously there, that, those numbers do change throughout the course of the year. They, that's why we don't bring you mid-year recommendations regarding fiscal distress. I mean, we wait until the end of the year and everything's closed out and we know for sure what the numbers are before we would, we just, you know, Stacy and I talked before and we just wanted to make sure you had a picture of, when you have 300 students, it is a struggle and it will always be a struggle just because of the number of students that they have. And, and that's the snapshot we were showing. And Dr. Saunders knows a whole lot more about this than I do, so I was trying to make, make some time to, give him, give him time to get up here.
Yeah, and I think just to, to raise that up, this is mainly looking at just unrestricted funds. And so, it would be those local funds, some state funds, but not categorical such as ESA dollars, PD dollars, would not include those.
Okay.
And, and I think just trying to- And, and I think, just trying to sum up a little bit about what Dr. Ray was referencing, I think there are some expenditures in here that would be allowable expenditures with restricted funds that would need cleaned up as far as assigning to the restricted expenditures that would not come out of unrestricted funds. Where the final result will be, I don't know at this point until it's on plan.
Okay, all right.
Dr. Moore?
Teacher salary-wise, where are you this year on teacher salary?
Um, we have, what's it, 30s? Um, the beginning salary is, it meets state standards.
Okay. Do y'all get additional funding for the state for salaries?
Yes, we do. We receive additional funding for, um, uh, working, I think, working in the, the area of the Delta. I think there's some additional funds that come to our teachers. So that comes directly from the state, directly to the teachers. So yes.
Okay. Um, I, I had a couple of questions that I want to ask. One of them was on, one of the slides that you had on standards. So when you had your October standards, did you have standard violations?
They were, yes, exceptions.
Those were violations?
Yes.
Okay. And have all of those been addressed or do you still have some that are outstanding?
They all have been addressed. Um, the only thing that's not officially addressed is high school principal. And, uh, we actually have the person that we're going to be recommending, that she's actually here today, uh, sitting in on the meeting, but again, we haven't taken that to the board yet. So, but that's the only thing that has not been addressed.
Okay, so all the others will clean up?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, I don't know if this next one is, is a question or a comment, but just going back to some of the numbers that Ms. Smith, uh, presented, looking at grades three through, I would say 11, because that's what your, your academic scores were from, there were 12 out of 161 students that would be considered ready, or I think maybe there was one or two that were exceeding. But, you know, if, if I'm looking at that, that's 1% of those students. And I look at it the other way, you know, they had 1% that were succeeding, but then there were 149 students and 99% of your students that were not ready for workforce, were not ready for wherever they were going in the next grade. And, you know, to me, that's not, that's a problem, but that's a symptom, okay? There's a, that's a symptom that there's something going on that, that needs to be addressed. And, and that to me is why, you know, the Level 5, the support i- is wonderful and you're already getting a lot of that, but I think the second part of this, where you come in and look at all five of these systems and look at what needs to be done in human capital, what needs to be done in facilities, what needs to be done in, in student supports and academics and, and financial, what needs to be done in each one of those areas and looking at the whole system together? Because you, you, you realize it's just like your body, you, you have to look at the whole thing. You can't just look at one part. And, and to me, that's the most important part of this classification is coming in and, you know, I know you're looking at it on, on the inside, but sometimes it helps when you have someone that is an expert in that field come in and look at the whole, the whole thing and see, well, here's a problem and if we fix that problem, that's going to start snowballing and helping all of the areas. So, you know, that 99% not, not getting what they need, that, that's a, that's a problem. And I, I understand that, but it's also a symptom that we need, that, that there's something that needs to be done and, and the district needs help. And so that's, that's my outlook on, on this. And so I don't know if any of the other board members have, have questions or comments they would like to make at this point.
Ms. Newton, I would like to address what you said.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm going to say that you are absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. We, uh, understand that a lot of work needs to be done in an effort to ensure that our students are succeeding academically. Um, I'm an academic superintendent. I, I am just, I'm, I'm in the classrooms, uh, I'm in the buildings, uh, because I want this so desperately for these students. So you're absolutely right. And again, we welcome those supports. Uh, we've been bringing in, again, our, some of our own supports because we understand that the state can't be with us 24/7. We understand that, uh, the co-ops can't be with us every day. We've got to do this ourselves. And so again, we've been bringing in those professionals, have you, as you, uh, mentioned earlier, to come in to assist us with that. We're not trying to do this by ourselves. We're not asking for that. We're just asking for those supports, come in and do all of the analysis. We welcome all of those. But again, we would like to remain, um, in a, maybe a hyper-level, Level 4. We'd like to remain in Level 4.
Okay. All right, any other questions or coming, Dr. Hill?
So, but make sure I understand. Commissioner, you said that that couldn't happen based on Level 5. Is there, is there a structure that has, you know, you said that was a difference in, in what the support?
Yeah.
So, to make, make sure we're clear on, on what we, what we have, what we can do. Can we do what she's asking in Level 4 basically? I, I didn't understand you. I want to make sure.
Well, I mean, Level 4, to stay Level 4, a status quo. The department continues to do what we've been doing. Level 5, you all require us to then bring a plan and you all review that plan on a regular basis like we do. Correct. Under the rules, Level 5 is where you all have the authority then to take additional action, either directing us or taking action, which we're not asking for and would not recommend at this point regarding superintendent, board. You know, you, you, you have, you have more options, uh, to be more directly involved in the process. And that's where, you know, knowing what you, you see on the quarterly reports from Level, uh, the Level 5, current Level 5 districts, that's what begins to happen. That, this sets that process in motion.
Any other questions from board members online? Anyone here? Okay, thank you, Dr. Ray.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Ms. Bruno, at this point, uh, our, our motion from the board, make sure I'm, I'm not messing this up. Our motion would be to, uh, either grant the appeal or deny the appeal. Is that correct?
That is correct, Ms. Newton. And to grant the, the, the school district has asked that they not be placed in Level 5 intensive support. So the motion is, the appeal is granted, that would mean they would not be placed in Level 5. If the appeal is denied, that would mean that you would then move forward and potentially classify the school district as being in Level 5.
That would move on to our next item on the agenda then?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, so at this point, we are ready for a motion from the board to either grant the appeal, uh, to not place, uh, the Marble Lane District in need of Level 5 intensive support, or to deny that, uh, appeal.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Wood?
I move to deny the appeal of the school district.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Wood to deny the appeal. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. McFetrich. Probably need to do a roll call for this one.
Ms. Wood, could I, could I speak just briefly?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I, uh, I want to, I want to first say that despite the fact that I'm, I'm gonna, I've, I've moved and I'll vote to deny the appeal, it has nothing to do with Dr. Ray or the other members of the leadership team from the community. Um, if, if the request to the board had anything to do with removal of the superintendent or removal of, of Mr. Williams on the board, I would, I would have a lot more questions, a much higher standard, and, and I would not be convinced at this time to do that. Um, the reason I've, I've made this motion and will vote in this direction simply because Level 4 has not produced the results for the kids of the school district that we would want to see. And I believe that we need all available resources to, to change the trajectory of what's going on in the community. But again, I reiterate that, uh, Dr. Ray, this has nothing to do with you. I'm very impressed by you and, and very hopeful that, that your leadership will result in the results that we're seeing. And, and the same with the board. I applaud your hard work and I look forward to you working with the department in the, in the months to come.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Very well said, thank you.
Great, all right. On the motion to deny the appeal of the district, Ms. Hunter? A, and a yes vote is in support of Mr. Wood's motion to deny?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
Okay, motion passes. So we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is to consider the classification of the Marble Lane School District in need of Level 5 intensive support under the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act. Ms. Smith?
Did you, did you need me again?
Well, I, I didn't know if you had any comments?
Um, no, just requesting the, the action to, to classify. Um, one of the things that struck me the most today in Dr. Ray, and did y'all like Dr. Ray or what?
Yes, yes, yes.
I told you she was a star, didn't I? Um, one of the things though that she said in her presentation, and she has shared this with me before, was the kids saying to her, "Dr. Ray, please find us a teacher." So, human capital, it's an issue and the quality of teachers in the classrooms. Not saying people aren't working, not saying people aren't dedicated, not saying people don't love kids and are trying their best, but support's needed. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Smith?
Sorry.
If we, um, this analysis, if, if we are to move forward with this analysis, what does that look like for your team? Would that get started immediately? And when would y'all plan to come back to report to us?
Yes, it will start immediately. I'll have, um, some type of report for you at the December 8th meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll continue on. I think with Helena, I reported on it like two, like two months in a row.
Okay.
So as we're finding and discovering, we'll present information.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board before any other discussion? Okay, so we are, are ready for, uh, a, a motion about the Marble Lane School District.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Wood?
I move that the Marble Lane School District be classified as in need of Level 5 intensive support and that the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education conduct an analysis of all school district systems and make recommendations for action by the state.
Okay, we have a, a motion by, uh, Mr. Wood. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Henderson. So we will do a, any, any more discussion on, on this one? Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one also.
And Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. McFetrich?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Dr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion passes. And, and again, uh, I, I want to reiterate what Mr. Wood said very well. This is not a reflection on how hard you're working and how much you love your, your district and your kids. We just want to give you the support that you need for your students to succeed and, and for this district to succeed. Anything else?
No other business.
Okay, no new business? Are there any public comments? Okay, so we are ready for a motion to adjourn then.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, and a motion by Dr. Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you for, for being here today.